On the agenda today. I guess. Were there, the applicants are all on. Remote. Access. So we will engage them when it is their hearing and. The interim use is replacing the conditional use permit for. The temporary hot mix plants. And with that.
Mind this one out again. MPM.
That I will open the hearing for. MPM Midwest pavings and materials and ask Alex to read the legal notice.
An applicant has been submitted by Midwest Deviation Materials requesting an interim use permit. Required by Conwood County zoning ordinance number thirty six for hot mixed plants on the parcel of property described as southeast corner of section eight. Township one oh seven north range thirty five west in belt township Conwood County Minnesota. Public hearing to consider said interim use permit will be held by the Conwood County Planning Commission. On June second twenty twenty five at twelve thirty P M. Hearing will be held at ten twelve fifth avenue on Wyndham Minnesota five six one oh one. For any questions, please call eight three two eight two.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Um, my iPad keeps glitching on me here.
Wifi is a little, I just turned these two off, so I. You want me to?
Just what's next on the agenda? Are we asking MPM to?
Yeah, pretty. Mark, if you want to turn your microphone on and just kind of state exactly where where this is going. What you're doing, that kind of stuff.
Yep, uh, it's the same. Small mobile plant that we've had in there in years past. It's going to be located in the same spot on the site. And it is, uh. It's currently, the plant itself is currently in New Ulm. It wouldn't come back out to Sioux Rock until later in the season. Positive on a. Affirm date on when it would come back or if it's coming back. But, uh, yeah, same same operations as years past, just the. Same plant. Same location.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Um, the. Do you have plans for a different, any other operators this summer? At this time, or?
Not right now. If it would be, it would probably be Central Specialties. But I have not heard anything to that. Effect yet.
Okay. Yeah, because I I'm understanding that with the interim use now, if it's a. What regardless what operator they'll, they don't, you don't need to get another permit. This one will cover them all for the year.
Okay.
Think you're, I think you may be aware of how that works now, but that's. My understanding is that this interim use permit will allow. You to have, uh, multiple operators, not at the same time, but, um. As as you get requests for. And they would just follow all what you'd be responsible for them to follow all of the. Ordinance conditions and the any other temporary conditions that we would put on.
Gotcha. So what would be the procedure if we did have two plants in there?
Um, I don't know that if you add two plants at the same time.
Yeah.
I think if you had two plants at the same time, you'd have to do another application because then we'd have to look at the sighting. For that second plant.
Okay.
But if, you know, if they're going back on this this site that you've kind of traditionally used, then it wouldn't. You don't want it to be an issue.
Okay, yeah, they would.
That makes.
Yeah, they would be in the same. Same spots south of the, south of the river there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's happened once in the past where we've both been in there at the same time.
Right.
That MPM and CSI both had their plants in there at the same time.
Sure.
So they would, but we would just need another. Permit for that second plan then.
Right, if there's two at the same time. Correct, Alex, is that right? Yeah. Yeah, if there's two at the same time, but if one, if one's in and pulls out and then the other one comes in, that's a different scenario then.
Yep, gotcha.
Okay. Any questions on from anyone else?
The tra- will the traffic be? Like it's been in the past, or how is that going to work for?
Yep, yeah, well, uh, it's a left dot of the side. To, I guess, limit the the travel on the gravel there. Um, and we typically, when we're in there. Or if CSI is in there, we'll make them do it. Um, spray that little section road with fluoride, usually get a hold of you guys road authority and get some grading done out there prior to that. But, uh, but yeah, traffic patterns would be the same. Pavement, I guess, uh, which job they're going. As far as ingress and egress into the site to get to the plant and away from the plant, that will be the same.
Okay, just to make sure we're clear, your, the the wifi is giving us a little bit of break in your in your, um, voice. It's modulating a little bit. But the the traffic for the plant enters off of the gravel road and then will enter County Road Two off of that township road.
Correct.
And the the traffic for your quarry will continue as it is off of County Road Two.
Correct.
Okay. Let me ask if Alex received any public comment?
The only public comment I received was, um. The county engineer stated that. All hauling routes. Should be, there should be a condition that all hauling routes should be approved by the local road authority. So, Mark, just make sure that you're. Um, talking to any townships you're going through. And then talking to Nick Klisch, our county engineer. Making sure we're all clear on. Where you're going and where you're traveling.
Understood.
That's all I got.
Okay. So we're dealing with, um. Ordinance twenty eight and thirty six for for this, what? The whatever is in ordinance twenty eight that deals with the the hot plant. And ordinance thirty six, those have to be followed. And then, um, what do we typically put on for? Other conditions? I suppose.
I have, I have a condition there. All right, um, so first one could to be compliant with ordinance twenty eight thirty six. Second one shall obtain unnecessary federal, state, local permits and fees. Uh, third one, keep waste receptacle on site during construction, if there is any. For cancellation of permit, uh, we would say November thirtieth twenty twenty five. Um, hours of hauling. Six A M. to nine P M. and then agreement with a local road authority on hauling routes. So six conditions, pretty straightforward, cut and dry. I don't know if we really even need to go through the findings. But. We can, if you want to.
Do the conditions, did you hear those, Mark?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Um, do we need to do it just for process?
We could, um, we could just answer the questions yes or no. We don't really need to find.
Okay, yeah.
Actually find any finding.
Just for the process, we should probably.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, just go through the questions quick and just save the findings. Has been determined that this use will not create excessive burden or hazard on existing parks, schools, streets, or the public facilities. And utilities which serve or post serve the area. And if, uh, Wayne, if everyone just answers yes, I'll just put. Five or six Xs or whatever, however many people there are here. Um, the yes, so.
Yes.
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 And then usually we go through a whole finding if. If it's something with a condition to use permit. We go through, uh, if anyone has any reasons for why his house findings, all that kind of stuff. And that's if we have. Um, so two, will the use and appearance of the site be sufficiently compatible or separated by distance or screening from agricultural residentially zoned or used land? So that the existing homes and adjacent residential properties will not be depreciated in value or adversely affected?
Yes.
Yes.
Hasn't been determined that the proposed use will not have a detrimental environmental effect?
Yes.
Hasn't been determined that, uh, businesses or advertising signs will not be visible or adjacent. Are visible to adjacent buildings.
Yes.
Yes.
And the use, and this is the use in the opinion of the planning commission and reasonably related to the overall needs of county. Existing land use and the county comprehensive land use plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Is the use consistent with the purposes of the zoning code and the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use?
Yeah, yes.
Has been determined that the use will not cause a traffic hazard or congestion?
Yes.
Has been determined that existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected by because of curtailment of customer trade. Brought about by intrusion of noise, glare, or general unsightiness.
Yes.
Um, and if all answers are yes, by majority of the planning commission, the criteria for granting of the conditional use permit have been met. Conditional use permit will maintain the goals of the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. So if you want to. Prove that, then prove the conditions and.
Okay, it's the opinion of the chair that the majority of the planning commission answered yes to all the questions. If anyone disagrees, state so. And, uh. I didn't obtain a motion to grant the interim use. Permit to MPM. With a subsequent motion with the conditions.
Make that motion.
Okay. Then, um, moved by Heidi, seconded by Mike, that. The. Um. Interim use permit be granted to MPM for a hot mixed plant? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose same, that motion carries. Um, we had six. Conditions to add to the interim use permit. Is everyone comfortable with the ones that we stated? Does someone want to put those in motion?
Make a motion.
Lindsay. Heidi, moved by Lindsay, seconded by Heidi to. Um, attach the six conditions. As reported to the interim use permit. Any discussion? Discussion, hearing, and all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose same sign. That motion carries. Anything else, Mark, that you have questions or? Anything about?
Nothing for me.
Alex, when will this be available for them?
Um, tomorrow will be finalized.
Tomorrow, we'll go to the county commissioners, so then it'll be good after tomorrow.
Okay, and then, uh, I can't recall how it works in Cottonwood County is by. Approval document, the. Meeting minutes, or do I get a formal like permit to put on our plant or something?
You'll get a a formal interim use for permit. I'll just send it out to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And we'll adjourn the, uh. Public hearing for MPM. And call to order the public hearing for Dunick.
And.
Are they available on the?
Yeah, they're there.
Okay. Do you want me to present our proposal or Alex, you can start?
We're gonna read, we're gonna read the legal notice first, Jason, and then.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you.
An application has been submitted by Dunick. Uh, requesting an interim use permit required by Conwood County zoning ordinance number thirty six for a hot mixed plant. A parcel of property described as the portion of the south half, the northeast quarter of section thirty one, Dale Township, Conwood County, Minnesota. Public hearing to consider said interim use permit will be held by the Conwood County Planning Commission on June second twenty twenty five at twelve thirty P M. Hearing will be held at ten, ten twelve fifth avenue, Wyndham, Minnesota, five six one oh one. For any questions, please call five oh seven eight three two eight two eight seven. So Jason, if you want to go right ahead, then.
Yeah, can I just share my screen? Probably I'll throw this map up.
Well, they don't have any. Screen experience. Yours is on my computer, but we have, we we have.
Okay, that's fine. I know you're probably familiar with the site, um.
We can pull up the maps and then.
Sure. Um, yeah, we're looking to, um. I should introduce myself first here, Jason Versteg with, uh, I'm engineer with Dunick. We're looking to, um. We're requesting a a conditional use permit for an asphalt, a per- a temporary asphalt plant, uh, at. The what's known as the Anderson pit. Uh, it's owned by, um. Uh, Mickey's. Uh, R A Mickey Sand and Gravel, and, um, it's just south of. Uh, what we used to call the blotch pit, and I think the county owns owns that now, so. Um, but this permit will be, uh, for for the. Um, for that Anderson pit owned by Mickey. Um. It's going to be for, um. Projects, Camp Co- Cottonwood County projects, I believe it's west going from. Wyndham, uh, and County fifteen, and I think it's east, uh. On County seventeen, I remember correctly. Um, so, and I believe those projects will be starting, or at least, you know, the paving will be starting, um. Somewhere around the beginning of of July. Uh, I would assume there's other things that will happen prior to then, but. Um. Yeah, again, it would be a project that'll be, uh, done. This year, so our request is for just, um. Uh, you know, the, just the construction season. Um. Hauling out of the pit will be, uh, to the north, uh, I guess. Through the through the county pit, uh, or just slightly through the county pit, uh, and then, um. Coming out onto, and I forget what County Road that is, is that eighteen that runs? Um. Uh, alongside that, let me just double check here.
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
Is it thirteen? Yeah, it's thirteen. Yeah, I, you're right. Thirteen that runs, uh, just, uh, to the east of that site there, and then, you know, south. South on to Wyndham and then to the to the project east and west from there, so, um, of course, that's paved road. So not anticipating, um. Problems with dust control or anything, um. Certainly, if there's, you know, dust that arises out of the pit that's causing a safety issue. Um, or a nuisance issue, you know, we would address address that with. Um, the haul roads that are on site, uh, with a water truck more than likely. Um. But once we get onto the public roads, don't anticipate anything, um. Of of any, uh, of any problem there as far as dust is concerned. Um. Um. You don't know that I necessarily have anything else specific, uh, that. That I should present, um, but, uh, certainly I'm open to, uh, any questions that you might have. Um, and, uh. Try to answer anything that you might be curious about.
Okay, thanks, Jason, for your information. Um, has there been a plant on this site before?
Yes.
There has been asphalt plant at this.
As far as I know, yeah, I I know there's been plants to the north in the county pit, um. Uh. At at earlier times, and I think, I think there was probably, uh, a plant on this site too. This is a relatively new site, but I think there was a plant site. Um, a few years back. Um, we don't own the site, so I, I'm not hundred percent certain with all the, um, all the history on it, but. Um, I know back when we, I think it was two thousand fifteen or so, we got, had an asphalt plant on that that northern. Blotch pit at that time, Todd Blotch, so, um.
Is there? Um, the the site to prevent, you know, runoff into the. Into the lower elevation, is there berms around where you're going to be working with the plant, or? How's this site set up?
My understanding is it's, 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 um, it's built into the. The grade of the surrounding area, so, yeah, just by by nature of the the excavation. Um, you know, it's got basically berms around the site, or it's, the the runoff is contained on site.
Yeah, okay.
And that would be. You know, probably more of a. Issue with the, um, with the. Uh, mining permit, which which is maintained by Mickey, but, um. Yeah, certainly from an asphalt plant standpoint, we'll make sure that, you know, any secondary containment and that type of thing that that would, uh. That would be an issue relative, or you know, could be a potential issue relative to leaks and that type of thing would be would be addressed, um. Properly, you know, by PCA, uh, standards and all and all that, but, um. Uh, and certainly we have, you know, all the air permits and and all that in place with the PCA as well, so all that's maintained, uh, through the state, um. But, uh. Um. Yeah, you know, as far as, you know, stormwater runoff, that, yeah, that that should all be contained, so.
Okay, and I think the. Ordinance thirty six addresses the. The maintenance of equipment and those types of things on the property and any, you know, um. The the storage, what what is appropriate to be stored there and what's not allowed to be stored on site. Far as fuel and those types of things and. So, um, just so you're familiar with the parts of or, both ordinance twenty eight that deals with mining and ordinance thirty six, which is specific to the. Mining asphalt plants are addressed in there.
Okay.
Okay, um. Did you receive any public comment on this, Alex?
Uh, the only comment I received is, uh, Nick Klisch, our engineer, is, um, is aware of this. Uh, plan going in, and he's in full support of it, and, um, so they're already working with the road authority on this one, which is Nick Klisch. But it'll still be a condition just for preemptive purposes. That's it.
Okay. Um, any other questions from? The committee? And we should run through the findings of fact.
Okay, uh, has been determined that this use will not create excessive burden hazard on existing. Facilities and utilities which serve or post serve the area.
Yes.
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 Will the use and appearance of the site be sufficiently compatible or separated by distance or screening from agricultural or residentially zoned or used land? So that the existing homes and adjacent residential properties will not be depreciated in value or adversely affected?
Yes.
Has been determined that the proposed use will not have a detrimental environmental effect?
Yes.
Has been determined that businesses or advertising signs will not be visible to adjacent dwellings?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the use, in the opinion of the planning commission, reasonably related to the overall needs of county, the existing land use, and a county comprehensive land?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is the use consistent with the purposes of the zoning code and the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use?
Yes.
Hasn't been determined that the use will not cause, uh, the traffic, traffic hazards or congestion?
Yes.
Yes.
Has been determined that existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected because of curtailment of customer trade. Brought about by intrusion and noise, glare, or general unsightiness?
Yes, yes, yes.
All answers are yes by majority of the planning commission, the criteria for granting of the conditional use. The interim use permit have been met. It interim use permit will maintain the goals of. Health, safety, general welfare. They, uh, they can prove this, and I'll go through the conditions again one more time.
Um. Make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to. Um, approve or recommend to the Cottonwood County Commissioners approval of the interim use permit for. Um, the Dunick, um, plant. Any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same. Then we will have conditions, um. Ordinance twenty eight and thirty six will be followed. All local, state, and federal permits and fees will be applied for and paid. Uh, waste receptacle will be on site for any miscellaneous waste that could be created. The, um, interim permit will. Be, um, the the end date will be November thirtieth twenty twenty five. Hours of operation will be six A M. to nine P M. for hauling. And, uh, appropriate road authority will be, um. Will be, uh, met with to approve the hauling routes. Any other? Conditions? Someone want to put those in motion? Okay, second.
I'll say.
Okay, moved by Heidi, seconded by Mike to. Um, Jason, the six. Conditions are those understandable?
Yes, they are.
Okay, the six conditions, um. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same, motion carries. Um, any other questions from you, Jason?
No, I think I've.
The permit will be, yep, the permit will be available tomorrow after the commissioners meet.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Alex will send you a a permit, um. Flacered to, you know, do with what we do with it.
Okay. Appreciate it. Appreciate, uh, allowing, uh, me to join, uh, via teams today. That helps me out, so.
Sure, thanks.
All right.
We'll adjourn the hearing for Dunick. And call to order the. Interim use permit hearing. For Central Specialties, and I would ask Alex to read the legal notice, please.
Application has been submitted by Central Specialties requesting an interim use permit required by Conwood County zoning ordinance thirty six for objects plants. Parcel property described as the northeast quarter of section twelve, Ambloid Township, Conwood County, Minnesota. Public hearing to consider said interim use permit will be held by the Conwood County Planning Commission, June second twenty twenty five, twelve thirty P M. Hearing will be held at ten twelve fifth avenue, Wyndham, Minnesota, five six one oh one. For any questions, please call five oh seven eight three two eight two eight seven. So this one is on the Red Rock.
Old, the, what's considered the old Red Rock quarry?
The orig- yeah.
The original Red Rock quarry?
Northeast. If you want to, Luke, if you want to unmute and kind of explain. Uh, everything.
Yeah, this will be, um. Portable hot mixed plant, just like the last two. It'll be in the same spot in the Red Rock quarry that we've been in in the past. Um. Jobs, a handful of jobs are actually Brown County. I think it's it's one job, but it's seven stretches of road. So the haul road will be north on seventy one. Um, as of now, tentatively scheduled end of October, beginning of November. Forty-six thousand tons of mix. And. Not sure if you need anything else. It's pretty similar to the last two.
Okay. Questions from anyone? You you mentioned it's in the same spot in the that it's been before, and that spot is in the same condition as it's been years past?
Yep.
Okay. And on the, on the stretch of gravel between the pit entrance and exit and the highway seventy one, will you be? Pit entrance and exit and the highway seventy one, will you be? Doing some dust control there, or as needed, or what, what's your plan there?
Yeah, we'll do dust control as needed, um. And we'll have a. Hauler out agreement in place before we do any hauling.
Okay.
And then the rest of the routes, it's US seventy one to US fourteen, so that's all paved and.
Then you're out of Cottonwood. You take seventy, highway seventy one out of Cottonwood County.
Correct.
Oh, okay. And the, the return route will be the same?
Yeah, yep.
Did you receive any public comment?
The only comment I received was from the Cottonwood County engineers saying that um. Uh, Central Specialties needs to get in touch with all local road authority. Could, I think in this case, be Ambloid just for that little half mile. And then um, Nick himself and. And I'm sure Nick's working with.
Hmm.
As well, just uh, just making sure that they're going on seventy one, and if there's any detours or whatever. I know there's always construction, so. Other than that, no, no, I got nothing.
Okay. Then uh, just to uh. Run through the findings of fact.
Um, hasn't been determined that this use will not create excessive burden or hazard on existing parks, schools, streets and other public facilities and utilities. Serve our post serve the area.
Yes.
Will the use and appearance of the site be sufficiently compatible or separated by distance or screening for agricultural or residential zone or used land so that the existing homes? Adjacent residential properties will not be depreciated in value or adversely affected?
Yes.
Yes.
Has been determined that the proposed use will not have a detrimental environmental effect?
Yes.
Has it been determined that the businesses or advertising signs will not be visible or adjacent to dwellings?
Yes.
Yes.
Visible to adjacent. Is the use, in the opinion of the planning commission, reasonably related to the overall needs of the county, the existing land use and the county comprehensive land use plan?
Yes, yes.
Is the use consistent with the purposes of the zoning code and the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use?
Yeah.
Has it been determined that the use will not cause a traffic hazard or congestion?
Yes, yes.
And has it been determined that existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected because of curtailment of customer trade? Brought about by intrusion of noise, glare or general unsightiness?
Yes.
Yes.
If all answers are yes by majority of the planning commission, the criteria granting of this interim use permit have been met. The conditional, the interim use permit will maintain the goals of the health, safety.
Okay, thank you, Alex. The chair determined that the majority of the planning commission answered yes to all the questions. And if uh, someone want to. Make a motion to um. Recommend to the Cottonwood County Board of Commissioners approval of the interim use permit for Central Specialties. So, removed by Mike, seconded by Heidi. To recommend to the Cottonwood County Board of Commissioners uh, approval of the interim use permit for. Central Specialties. Any discussion? Question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same. Motion carries, um. We will probably have. Six. Conditions on the interim use permit, they would be. Um, follow the ordinance twenty eight and thirty six that deal with hot mixed plant. That all local, state and federal permits and fees be applied and paid. That a waste receptacle be on site for any miscellaneous waste that's um. Produced, the end date of the. Interim permit would be November thirtieth. Hours of operation would be six AM to nine PM. And that you would coordinate with the appropriate road authorities. Including but not limited to Ambloid Township and Cottonwood County. Any other? Conditions anyone would want to put on? That would entertain a motion for those?
Make a motion. I'll say.
Moved by Heidi, seconded by Mike to put the six conditions with the interim use permit. Any discussion? Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same. That motion carries, any questions from you, Luke?
Nope.
But the, the. Permit will be available tomorrow after the Cottonwood County Commissioners meet, and then Alex will be sending you a. Form that shows the permit.
Okay, should I be at that meeting as well, or does that not matter?
No, it's not necessary.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
So. We'll uh, adjourn the hearing for Central Specialties. And ask if there's anything else for the Cottonwood County Planning Commission today, oh, we have minutes from.
They should be in the, they open up the folder. There's. Underneath the three.
I read before.
Okay. See, I'm good.
Where were they at? Oh, is this one?
Yeah.
Four, three?
Four, three, twenty five. Yeah, right, right, right.
Was this the meeting that we had the last time?
That's, that'd be the MPM expansion.
Yeah.
Or the, yeah, AAW.
When we approved, approved their um, AAW.
Yeah.
Hey. Um. Everyone have a chance to look at it, and someone want to make a motion to approve those minutes? These are gonna probably go to court.
They've already gone, so.
They've already gone, so. I guess I'll make a motion to approve them. Moved by Lindsay, seconded by Heidi to approve the minutes from April third, twenty twenty five, any discussion? Question, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Uh, both same sign, that motion carries. Anything else, Alex? Anyone else, have anything else? Welcome, Wayne.
So, just a question, Ambloid member?
Yeah.
So I can approve, make a motion?
Yep.
I didn't know if that's liaison or just.
No, you're part of the, so, yeah. Part of, no, it's. Yeah.
Yep, you can make.
Any comments you want to make, whatever, yeah, you're just like the rest of us. And I will adjourn the meeting of the Cottonwood County Planning Commission.